Larry. The Barrington zoning board of adjustment called to order. Oh, Paul. Dave.
Present.
Paul. George. Tracy. Got to go with last names. And Ray DiMaris, present. Okay, first item is to, I'm getting a, turn me out, turn that down. To vote for chair and vice chair. Scottson.
Want to do that after the meeting?
We can't, we can go. You'd like to do that? Who's at to the end, we'll call the case.
Comfortable with that change.
All right. All right, then we're going to call case number one, two, one, S thirty, dash GR, dash twenty-two, variance, owner Richard Townsend, request by the applicant for variance from Article Four, Section four point one one, Table two, who allow setbacks from two road, pointed is two point seven, and twenty-seven three, from Hall Road, and twenty-seven point three, and twenty-one point eight, from Rosemary Lane. Where forty is required, and twenty-three point two, from the side, thirty is required, point two four acre lot, on general residential zoning district. The applicant present. So I was not here for that case, if you mind. Take the start.
No problem.
Is that your case?
Some diagrams.
Excuse me. Thank you.
I'll give mine when it's over. I'm sorry, Vanessa.
Go ahead, sir. Okay, uh, well. Our answers for non-conforming lot, small lot, and I was asked last to refer to the five items, the request for the variance is justified, and the answers to the first is this is an unnecessary hardship that limits development, old, deficient, misplaced architectural design, not conforming to the area. And to the two, the intended variance is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance, conforming in size and angle, that is conducive to people's interest, whether they realize it or not, and the diagrams in this is demonstrate exactly what that means.
Excuse me, sir.
Yes.
Need a comment on here in number two, last part of it, whether they realize it or not, would finish your explanation.
I'm going to get to that, but if you saw page number two, there is radius diagrams on it. That means is that a lot of people don't actually realize the objective, so I came with diagrams to clarify that. Number three, the project does not make anything seem smaller, and can offer no less than improving all surrounding property values. And number four, like my Jip property, which is one sixty hall, I've got pictures in there of that, the before and after, when we started construction seven years ago, looks like today. That is an abiding property, and that property is going on the market again, right now, we're renovating it. As you can see, that house is pretty nice, what we did, took a full cottage and turned it into a pretty substantial home. Purpose of showing that is the type of work that I like to do, like I've done, and the symmetry, if you can look at that picture, we're jumping a little bit ahead, but you can, you can see the symmetry, the before and after, I really take a lot of pride in symmetry and positioning. That particular property utilized an old structure, so I didn't really angle, angle it towards a southern exposure for G matters and such. And five, the variance does not contradict the public interest supports, what by all reasons stated above. You go to the page two, radius is talking about title, proposed future potential. Most would ask, why would I put this house at an angle on the spot, and there's a lot of reasons, number one, Rosemary Lane comes up, and there's a visual angular aspect that's pretty important to the safety of egress, coming from Rosemary Lane to Hall Road. In addition, the lot on the left, which is owned by Lutzi, who spoke, one of the people that spoke at the last meeting, very tight there, there's, there's a pavement is on this parcel, it's a little complicated, she's pretty concerned about being able to back out of her driveway and such, so I've made provisions in there that we can always grant his minutes to make things a little bit easier, and if this house was situated square on that lot, possible. Now, if you turn to the next page, you can see some conceptual difference for the angles, demonstrates two house lots, side by side, and the angles as you drive way or road, see that in some cases, the angle by positioning the whole forty-five degrees to the street gives us almost twice as much distance. And the other feature angle is it is sole south, positioned for sole south, as he purposes. And if you turn to the next page, you can see the houses in color that I, of the house, the house, it's the before and after pictures, this is the adjacent house, I don't know if you've all been out there, ever seen this, okay, so this, this was cottage, nineteen thirty four cottage, and you can see the before and after, the, the front view, and on the other side, the back view, the before and after views, that took me ten, ten months to build. John, John was the inspector on the house, worked with us very, very nicely, very, very nicely. Let's see what else I have, the next page, that pretty much covers the application for the variance right now, in support of arguments, I'm going to turn this over to a script that I put together, because I'm not very good, I speak any longer, really quite bad, so typed it out to help myself. You heard from three neighbors last month, Lutzi and a butter, argued about all the surrounding developments, understandably, kind of tight encroach on, not really encroach, but to squeeze in on, on the old timers, and I'm one of the old timers myself. Terry Stivers, he's, he's a seventy-five percent owner of this house, that you saw the color picture, I'm the twenty-five percent owner, I retained twenty-five percent when I sold the property, he stated that this proposed plan would be good for the neighborhood, improve property values, which obviously it does, and Matt Nusswinder, he's here again today, he's not in a butter, but a person who claimed to be the president of Rosemary Lane Association, and at that time, last month, I'm pretty offended by a lot of things that are said, there's a lot of bad things, like, I don't know, you guys know how old this building is, this building right here, anybody know how old this building is? Interesting, because it just came to my attention, this building is fifty years old, I went to school here, when this building opened, I've been around here for a long time, I went to the Flakes region, I was a developer for a number of years, a long time, I came back to this town, because I loved this town, I'm not real fond of a lot of things that I've seen go on, particularly the, the people, when I traveled around.
Point of order. Do not want to shut the gentleman off, but what does it have to do with our case?
Great.
I would ask you to consider that, please.
Please concentrate on the actual variance request, not.
Okay, well, that, that's it for the variance, it was the supportive stuff, yes, any arguments, the argument, like, for example, Matt Nusswinder, he claimed to be the, representing the other people on Rosemary Lane. As president of the Association, Matt's public opinion has no standing, has no rights to Rosemary Lane, Rosemary Lane Association was administratively dissolved on September twelfth, two thousand twenty-one. This is important.
It's not us, because you're talking about things that would end up in a court, and we're not.
No, we're talking about argument that came to this table.
We didn't listen to it, we did not put any weight on any of it.
Oh, okay, okay, all right.
We don't care about any of that.
So this, that's good, because, thank you.
It's the conflict between the plot plans, correct?
I'm sorry.
One of the plot plans, the plot plan that was presented was stamped, not a boundary survey, that's why this case was discontinued.
Correct.
So, okay, I think that needs to be addressed.
You have it, it's, it's been submitted through the, so we still.
We do, but we do have.
I have a conflict.
Boundary surveys here. Yeah. And Mr. Tim, and I have to ask to be recused in this case, because I am friends with one of the surveyors on this project, and.
If we move to, to hear the case further, Dave, we recuse yourself, but we may have a different decision before then.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
I, I would like to make it known that one of the surveyors I used last year, do I have an intention to use that surveyor again, no, it was just personal business that I had him. I, I feel that I'll be impartial with my decision.
Mr. Chairperson, the nonprofit that I, this happens in small towns, folks, the nonprofit that I am the CEO, executive director, received a very large gift of donated in-kind services in order to construct a one point seven million dollar shelter.
So if we case this forward, both Dave and Tracy will accuse yourselves.
I think that would be appropriate, yeah.
If we move to that, so we still have two surveys that are in conflict.
Correct.
If we use the most conservative of the plans, what is that, what is that, what is set that?
Plan that actually shows that.
No.
No.
I'm, I'm finding it difficult to even hear this case without a, this resolved, personally.
Well.
And I'm, I, I think probably, I'm going to query the board here, I think we probably should continue this until this surveying issue is, is resolved.
Oh, might, might I, might I, boundary disputes are not to be adjudicated by local zoning boards, and as such.
That's correct.
Should not be discussed in any great length at these meetings, I have a boundary survey prepared by a local professional, that we are required to rely on.
Point of order, sir, it's my understanding that when you have two submitted survey plans, you have to use the more conservative of the two plans, and weigh a decision.
Well, that, that's a choice we can make, yes. Yeah, that is, that's what I had, I raised that issue.
For the board member, just remember to stick up the microphone table in front of you, just so the folks at home can hear quickly, and if you're shuffling papers next to the microphone, that also.
This is microphone?
Uh, no, the microphone's down in front of us.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know, I still have a problem with having two plans that are both stamped, and us having to make a decision on it. I would like to continue and give them enough to all this with amongst them, or, or we actually hear this, this case for.
Well, I might add that, sir, we're discussing.
Well, I think that, Chairman, that's positive added, I have reread this several times. You know, you, you have two surveyors that have their stamp, and they both have disagreements of either making, making a decision on stamp that either one of these gentlemen or their companies, I'm sorry, I don't know who owns companies, have that, so that's how I feel there.
Okay, I got you.
I'm sorry, I was making sure I understood this, am I supposed to comment on something I missed?
So, Mr. How do you feel about continuing this till we resolve the, the boundary disputes?
Yeah, well.
It's not our job to.
I think what I missed is we have two surveyors stamping a plan, and they're different. So how to, what do we do, we can't choose one?
Right. We require one stamped, stamped plan, and it should be the same, two of them, but we have two different ones, so I have.
If I may, I do note here that this, that it by the applicant, conservative one.
Still, I still. As I did at the last discussion, that I can't make changes to the zoning.
This is, oh, I retract that, never mind, okay. They're not, no, no, it's. No, I misread, I misread.
And that's a problem, but we're, we're going to be going back and forth with distances here.
No, we, we agree now.
No, sorry. I misread the, the plan.
So I could explain what you read to me, I think we should continue this until it's all boundary dispute.
We make a motion.
Before you make the motion, I believe that I have.
Point of order.
Yes, somebody can make a motion. I'm still going to recuse.
Just so before you guys finish, if you're going to continue, it has to be to a date and time specific.
Yep.
It might be worth talking to the client how much time they need, so they could come up with a cost.
We need the boundary lines, the surveys, consistent, that's all we need, how long do you think you need for that? Yes, sir.
Please go up to the table, see on the microphone camera, we'll sit there.
So there's no, there's no direct answer to your question, you have two individuals that disagree.
Sir, chairman, who?
I'm sorry, my name is Christopher Berry, I'm president of Berry Surveying and Engineering. You have two land surveyors that, and land surveying companies that fundamentally disagree on the methodology used at, in determining the boundary line, there's no way of determining the time it's going to take for two people that fundamentally disagree to agree, and there's no way of determining the time in which it's going to take for either Mr. Townsend and Lutzi to determine on their own where they might agree where the boundary line is, or be forced to agree on some different terms, so I don't think it's a fair question to ask the applicant how long he or she needs to agree on a boundary line. Yes, I guess, I guess, if, if the board is inclined to continue this, we would ask for a thirty day extension to a date and time certain, and understand that we may need to come back and ask for additional time after that. I will ask the board, if the applicant were to ask for a variance, showing the distances to both boundary lines, the board entertain an application that would show that.
I want to see this, an agreement between the two attorneys, I believe each one of you has an attorney, so if we get that, get a lot of agreement, and present that to us, then we'll hear the case, that's how I feel, I'm only one person.
So I have recused myself, but it is my understanding that based on the evidence before you, that you to look at the most conservative of the two points, and that would likely deny.
So there are two, the two parts of this conservative setting here.
Understood.
Surveys, on one side, it's being used of this, of this particular application, and on the other side, it's not.
So it would be in Mr. Townsend's best interest.
Just so you can give them direction.
Yeah.
They use the more restricted line, are you going to try to get him to center it as much as possible to that closest setback line, so it's not like a three foot to that line?
Well, three, three feet is, yeah.
I just, I think, I'm just making the thing, you probably should give them some direction if they're going to be coming back, what it is you're looking for.
Furthest away from the setbacks.
So try to center it as much as possible to the.
Yes. If we continue, you can send a request to the office, zoning office, saying that you need more time, and we will make a motion at the next meeting to continue the case.
Understood.
I, I also just, so I'm not an assistant student, Chairman, I'd like to see an agreement between both parties.
I'd like to see one plot plan.
Yeah, exactly. A lot of from each one of their attorney, one of their attorneys saying both agreed to X, and that, that way, file, and we can move forward. That's how I feel, I'm not asking, it's not a motion.
What's the date for our next meeting?
May eighteenth.
May eighteenth. If somebody can motion, and we use their pen.
I'll make a motion that we continue this on this until May eighteenth, and with the, hopefully they will, that's my motion.
Paul. Paul, I vote?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Case continued to next month.
Thank you.
Would it be all right for just a few moments for me, and look free, won't take long, within five minutes.
Know that that would be appropriate.
I don't think time is, is the concern, it's the appropriateness of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, okay, back to. Chair. Anybody standing up?
So I have an opinion about this. I have an opinion.
What are we on? Sorry, voting for.
Chair and vice chair. It's supposed to apparently, by our rules, we're supposed to do this every April, so.
And, and.
It's April.
It's April.
So it's time.
When I was chairperson of the select board, found that during meeting, my time was often spent mitigating who got the opportunity of time, making sure that we followed the procedure, appropriately responding to public comment, and allowing people to speak when they should speak, and it didn't necessarily allow me the appropriate amount of time that I otherwise have spent discussing things, and so I think we have varying levels of subject experts on this board, and one of the things I find myself very good at, is I'm a trained facilitator through New Hampshire Listens, pretty good at following an agenda, and helping everyone have their appropriate time to speak, but do not have the depth or knowledge base that some of you do, so I would not mind sitting and being the chairperson with oversight of the agenda, and who is speaking, and allowing more comment from the people with more depth to their experience.
That somebody trying to think doesn't have.
Often.
That's something I'm not good at.
Yeah.
So I do not want to be chair, I'll tell you that.
So I would throw my hat in the ring for this.
You just did throw your hat.
I think I would throw my hat in the execution of that role.
I think your logic is, is, is. I mean, I got a whole five months more on the board than you do, so I had a lot more experience, and, but my background is in buildings, that said, I would second your nomination, he's very valuable on the board, he's been here thirty years.
I feel, I'm glad that you're here, and I feel like that's a huge asset to, to this, to this board, but I, I feel like the chair should be rated, and just with his breadth of knowledge and experience with this board, and having been on it for thirty-two years, having said that, I'd love it if you won, vice chair.
Yeah, I, so one of the things, I'll just respond to that, that occurs to me, and we changed out on the select board, the chairperson intended, did that because none of us is as smart as all of us, and I think that sometimes having those opportunities for varied leadership finds that voices are either more participatory or less participatory, and so, I don't know, that's something to consider, I think, as well, when you're thinking about leading meeting, is swapping that out year after year, is it then allowing more participation?
I think the rules allow that, right, so if we vote.
That's something to consider.
Right, every, as we change it every, every year, or we vote on it every year.
Put someone else in the chair.
Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, well, Ray wasn't.
The biggest part of the meeting is, 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 you know, keeping things going, right, you know, and not having people talking over each other, and, you know, and staying with the, the format of the meeting, you know.
Tonight, tonight.
Tonight was, yeah.
Ray hasn't been on.
Of all of us working together, making everything work out, I think it's a wonderful idea. I, as you know, have been to this for the last six years, of, every year, we only had one occasion where we put the chair twice in the road, because nobody absolutely would not take it.
Oh, really? You're talking about in the select board room? Yeah.
Mr. Knapp, he was, he was the only one in the last six years that went twice, and it was just one of those things, nobody else wanted to touch it, so with us, I think, not only that, but I think that gives, I say, you, Ray, gives you a chance to sit back and, you know.
Well, I always seconded to Karen, so, because Karen was the chair for quite a long time, so, you know, because I didn't want the job, you know, Karen did such a great job, also being a lawyer, helped a lot, so, you know, but you have learned from her, too, so.
It gives credit to her, that makes it work, and Paul was going to ask a question, I'll ask it for him, how do you feel about this?
I assumed I was going to be the chair, I figured, based on my experience, that you guys wanted, I mean, you've seen me operate, so, you know.
Get three, get three new individuals, I mean.
How long's it been since you, you've been acting as chair?
I've been vice chair since Karen left, basically.
Any idea when she left?
Like June.
It's been a couple, it's been almost two, two years, I think I've been operating as vice chair, we've been, we've been hoping she'd come back, but, yeah, maybe a year.
No, she, she was chair when I was, when I started a year ago.
Did you all start at the same time?
No.
No.
Maybe, maybe all you were the one that came on.
Right.
Okay, so I think you, so within the, within a year.
So when did you start?
In the summer, right?
I think so.
That was when she left, and Ray assumed the chair. So Ray hasn't even been the chair for a year.
So I, I, I'll throw in there that I think for the learning curve, for the knowledge base, I think this would allow what I can contribute most effectively.
I'll second this chair, and I'd like to nominate either George or Ray as vice, you guys have both been on the board a long time, I guess I can't nominate both of you, so one of you speak up.
I, I, I would allow Ray to be vice. You know, that's, that's what the board wants to do. Either way.
I feel like it, you should.
I, I, actually, let me, let me speak a little bit, I think, since you're just starting, take maybe a little bit of time, being on the board, for your chair, might be helpful, then taking it over right from the get-go.
I hear your feelings, as both vice chair and chairperson of the select board, actually pretty good at knowing when to pull people back from the platform, and when to allow them up to the platform.
We have a motion, and we had a second.
Which way, which, which one?
For Tracy, the chair.
Tracy stepped up, I seconded.
And so, we're there, so we, so we have a motion on it, is there another motion, and we also had.
A motion, okay.
Right, so that's two of us, so we have two individuals that are there, and so we need to decide who's going to be the chair, so with that being said.
She has two hats in the ring, except for you three.
Yeah, so. I, I, I will start it off with by saying that I would put Tracy as the chair, and Ray as the vice chair, that's how I feel, that's how my vote goes. That's how I feel, that's how my vote goes. Sir?
He voted for, as you.
How would you like to vote?
Obstain.
Obstain? Tracy, how would you like to vote?
I would vote for myself and certainly vice chair, Ray.
Myself as chair, but not as chair.
Okay, well, the vote comes up three to two for Tracy to be chair.
Another vice chair, though.
We were four to one, four to one. And so the vote shows that Tracy will be chair and Ray will be vice chair.
No, no, I'm saying I'm not going to be vice chair.
You won't be vice chair?
I would nominate George Bailey then for vice chair. I've sat with him, sorry, George, but I've sat with you long enough that I know that you know how to execute a meeting.
Well, you were a select, right? You are a select.
He is a select person, yes.
You are a select.
I am, I am, yes, yeah.
George, you want to be vice?
I, I would be vice if that's what you want. I mean, I, I will, I'm finishing my twelve years as a select.
The chair, Tracy nominated you.
Who is it?
Seconded yourself.
Yeah.
Or accepted it.
I would.
Okay, it's.
So motion, accept George Bailey as vice chair?
Yeah, that's. All right, so I want to congratulate Tracy as.
Abstaining, or are you?
Yeah, abstaining.
All votes, okay.
I will be your chair for one year, then next year I'm going to be smarter than you.
I, I agree.
I agree. I want to congratulate Tracy, and I want to thank the board for that support, so. What have you?
Thank you. What else do we have on?
Minutes.
But I make a motion, we accept the minutes as written, as submitted.
Second.
David?
Hi.
Hi. Any other business?
The only other business I have is, I said earlier.
I have something, I'm sorry. Put myself on the agenda, so I apologize, but, or not apologize, but I wanted to bring back to something that we were talking a little bit on the training as well. I know that we are going to be updating our rules of procedure from a staff point of view, and of course, the board can decide how they feel. I think that sidewalks to the variance applications is something that the board should consider.
Done some in the past.
Yeah.
But there's an official meeting when we do, so.
Correct, so where I was going with that is referring back to the training, is that it could be a set time and date, so that way it's a reoccurring meeting. You don't have to worry about it. I handle all of the reaching out to the applicant, to your, the board members, for example, so I'll give, for example, wish you could have made it, because it was a really good meeting, to kind of explain a little bit about.
Typically.
The.
Site visits, I mean, once in a great while we'll do.
Why wouldn't you? I'm just curious, as from.
A lot of times we, they, you know, it isn't really necessary for us to, you know, sometimes we do.
Okay.
And it basically comes with the testimony of the, that we hear, that we probably need a site visit here, something like that. So then we'll schedule one at that, you know, at that meeting. You know, I haven't seen anything that.
I also just wanted to bring that, if you didn't feel like you wanted to attend or couldn't attend, that's fine. I know that some other board members had expressed that that might be something that we might be interested in discussing. So I just wanted to kind of bring that up. I understand, like, if that's how you feel, but if there's something, like, we want to have it reoccurring. That way everybody knows it's on their calendar and could just say, hey, you don't have cases.
Talking like taking every case and saying we'd have a site visit at such and such a date.
For example, the example that was used, you can use any date, was like an hour before the ZB A meeting. That way it's fresh in your mind, visit the site. But it's, again, like you said, a public meeting, so public can attend. You typically would, I mean, then owners would be notified. And it'd be like a public notice. You attend, you, you could just be on the edge of the property. That's something that you would have to discuss. I just think that having boots on the ground, that's kind of like a funny term, but.
Oh, sometimes it's necessary, yeah, sometimes it's necessary.
Necessary, and you could, if you don't, if you don't want to attend because you didn't feel like you needed to, or you're familiar with the site, you don't have to attend.
Is this a common practice that's done by zoning board?
I think yes.
For all, for every, 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 excuse me, for every, every single case?
That's what Attorney Buckley, so what I heard from Attorney Buckley, so he's not only on the zoning board in his town, but he's the longstanding legal counsel for the New Hampshire Municipal Association. One of the things that he said that resonated with me, and Vanessa and I have talked about, I think it's a great idea also. Because not only for the board's benefit, but all of you can include in the abutter notices that there's going to be a site visit. And you're more likely to see the, see and hear from the abutters at a site visit, which is a public meeting, and that's, you know, that's all acceptable, and see things in a different way than you might from just looking at the plans and hearing or reading their letter. And so because, because it's open to the public, because it's open to everyone. And so, yeah, he said, in not only his professional legal opinion, but his experience, best practice to have a a site visit for every ZB A application, and go or not, but what happens.
But, I mean, whenever we had site, we don't talk. Right? We had.
Then, then that means we would have to take Barbara.
Somebody to take notes.
That would be your staff person.
Let, let, let me say this to you. It doesn't seem as if the funny bone was tickled on this. Why don't we turn around and try it for six months? Get back together again and say yay or nay.
That's a good, that's a good idea.
It takes care of both things. It shows we attempted it, because I will tell you, I went on one sidewalk. It was my age. By the time I got to wear the sidewalks, they were turning around and coming back after they had reviewed it.
No, it's true, I mean, kind of, kind of asking a lot of George to do that.
Oh, no, don't. No, what I'm saying is we should try it for six months, then we'd sit down, discuss it, and go from there. That way, at least we tried it, it didn't work, we didn't like it. That's it. Is that all right? Adam, chair? I don't know why you're raising your hand.
I, I'm actually, I think until the end of the meeting, this is.
Oh, no, that's fine.
Okay, so in reference to this as, as an option, and in reference to the rules of procedure, we've been presented with two different rules of procedure. Would it be appropriate if coming back together and on the agenda for the next meeting, we go down the line, the five of us, with proposed changes to those rules of procedure? And take notes and then vote as a group of what we bring forward, including the site? Yeah, including those sidewalks? Like, like basically put it.
We can put a clock to.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Otherwise, I'm going to miss some good TV.
Understood. So, so I would say if, if, if everyone comes prepared with the two sets of material that have been proposed in front of us, and any changes that you feel are very necessary, bring those forward to do a draft, vote on the draft, and then they cannot be implemented, it's my understanding, for at least sixty days, once the changes have been made to that. Does that work for everybody?
That's for me.
But you could still, even though they're not approved, you could still do site visits if you decide to do.
Yes, you could, yeah, anytime you want, but. I mean, I, I honestly, like, drove out when I saw variances.
Seconded.
So you have, you have a motion to adjourn at what time? Seven forty-five P M?
Thank you.
Fabulous.